Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, June 22nd, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll start tonight with the approval of the agenda. Do I hear any requests for changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, all right, I think it was Commissioner Kirk and Commissioner Farr with the second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Moving on, we have minutes from our Zoom, or our remote hearing, it wasn't Zoom. The meeting held Monday, May 26th, 2020. Do I have any requests for edits to the minutes, or do I have any concerns about the minutes? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Higgins and a second from Commissioner Marcos. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, minutes are passed. Moving on, we have one public hearing this evening. This is for the Eden Prairie High School signed PUD Amendment 2020-05. Request for planned unit development concept review on 66.6 acres. Planned unit development amendment with waivers on 66.6 acres. Will the proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening. If you would, state your name and spell for the record for me, and then tell us about your project, please.
I am Eric Tauschek with Spectrum Signs, E-R-I-C-T-A-U-S-C-H-E-C-K.
Great, welcome.
Thank you. I think I'm just gonna go through a little PowerPoint presentation, it's been a while, so it was fun putting this together. But really, I just put our drawings together.
It might not work, I'll be your helper.
Sure. So drawing one, first page, just shows basically the layout of the proposed signage. And it's all face illuminated, which would basically just mean the front of each character and graphic would illuminate. And this would be, the next page would show exactly where it would be proposed, or is proposed on the building. It's essentially just a wing wall, and it is for the Performing Arts Center. There is a night view to kind of just give you an idea. And on the next page, page three, just shows kind of a overall picture from street view. And it just kind of gives you the proportion of the size of the sign. And the next page, I just have a little summary. The Performing Arts Center currently has one sign that is not visible from the road and the entrance. So when cars approach and turn in, the school has found that there's some confusion. You know, some brakes being applied on cars trying to figure out where they're going. So they feel that, you know, this is a good next step, really, to help people be directed. Eden Prairie Schools would like to install a permanent sign in the area shown on the renderings to add visibility and help visitors get to the Performing Arts Center. Yet, like I said, this would decrease vehicle confusion in the parking lots. The goal is to amend the existing PUD sign to increase the total amount of square footage allowed for the signage, along with the total number of signs permitted. And the details would be to increase the total allowable sign area from 268 square feet to 371 square feet. And to increase the total number of permitted wall signs on the high school from six to seven. And the proposed sign as shown is exactly 102.8 square feet. And the last page just basically is a site map. And it's kind of hard to see, but there is off to the left there, proposed sign and arrow to that wing wall. And also a inventory of existing signage. And I'm able to answer any questions about the process or the construction of the sign?
Thank you. Any questions, initial questions?
Mr. Chair, quick question.
Yep.
Can I ask what triggered this application? Was it on your own volition, or was there a request from the city because it's a non-conforming sign before?
We were contacted by the city, I'm sorry, from the district. And just, you know, it's kind of part of our process to do the, you know, the due diligence and the research. Just found out this was not going to be approved as is, and, you know, just kind of followed the steps.
Okay, thanks.
Other initial questions? Thank you, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
Julie, will you be doing this?
Yes, sir.
Plan this report, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated, the school district is requesting a PUD amendment to allow some signage to be installed on the Performing Arts Center. As you may be aware, by visiting the site, there is currently a temporary banner that is used on the school, and temporary banners are not a signage material that is permitted by code. So as a part of other improvements to the school district, or school site, rather, the district and their representative contacted the city to understand, first of all, what the current approvals were on the site, what city code would allow, so that they could figure out what, if any, process they might need to go through in order to create a more permanent signage in this area. So as was briefly touched on in the previous presentation, back in 2001, the district did come through and receive approval for a planned unit development waiver to address signage on the PUD site that is the school. So at that time, there was an approval to allow six signs as a part of that package, if you will, totaling 268 square feet in size. So as a part of the request this evening, they are requesting approval to allow seven signs that allow for a total of 371 square feet in order to put a permanent sign in place at that Performing Arts Center. One, to fix the non-compliance issue, and two, to address the confusion in traffic circulation that exists on the site, and to just simply provide better identification as you approach the site. So staff is recommending approval of the PUD, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions for the city? Commissioner Mehdi?
Julie, the staff report mentions that the code allows 50 square feet of wall signage per frontage. I'm wondering, is that something that's specific to the public zoning? Or is that more of a PUD thing? Because I thought with a building like this, I think about the Eden Prairie Mall, and I'm like, there can be no way that there's 50 square feet, you know, on each frontage. So kind of, can you explain the background of where that 50 feet comes from? And maybe even if, how does that compare with some of the other areas of the code regarding sign size?
I'd be happy to. So Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the 50-square-foot requirement is part of the public zoning district regulations? The commercial district, just to answer kind of the question that was asked about the mall, the commercial districts, say at Eden Prairie Center, or any of the other more sizable shopping retail areas, would allow for much more signage than 50 square feet. But as you might know, the public district largely houses things like schools, churches, things of that sort. And they're allowed wall signage as well as freestanding signage, just not at the same rate that the commercial properties are. And of course, through the PUD, there is always an opportunity to look at signage as part of the campus or the site overall, as part of a larger PUD. And that's the option that the school district has gone through. The International School up on 62 has also pursued that option, other sites have as well. So it's not an uncommon thing to request the sign waiver as part of the PUD package.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the city at this time? This is a public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, you're more than welcome to. Good evening. Welcome. If you would, state your name and spell for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Allison Roberts. Do you want me to take this?
Yes, you can take it.
Okay. Realizing that's kind of hard to hear.
Excuse me, could you repeat your name again?
Sure, Allison, A-L-I-S-O-N, Roberts. Thank you. Thanks so much for letting me come, this is the first time I've been to this commission. I'm here representing myself, Eden Prairie resident across the school from the high school, as well as a board member of the Park Place condominiums, which are across the street. And I had some comments from residents after this was sent out, and they were just concerned about the signage and whether it was going to be a big video flashing screen. It doesn't look like from the description from the PowerPoint, it's going to be that, which I think the members at our condominium are going to be glad to hear that. Some members also expressed concern to me whether the lights on the sign were going to be really bright, talking about the new Viking Stadium over in Eagan, and how there was some complaints after that was put up from residents about the wattage of the lights being really bright. So just something to consider. I think it's wonderful that the school is going to have a new sign, but just some of those little details as to, to consider the wattage, you know, how much illumination is being put out into the street because there are residential housing right across the street from that space. So that was mostly what I just wanted to bring forward in consideration, not necessarily against the project, but just those details, so.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Mr. Tauschek, would you mind coming forward and just talking about the planning around the illumination?
Certainly.
And just speak to those points, that'd be great.
The, when a concern like that is brought forth, you know, I think it's important to just mention that it can be, there's two ways to control the sign. It's either going to be hardwired to a time clock, or there's a photo eye that's installed. When, when I'm picturing the school, I think a time clock would be better, more reliable. When you have a photo eye that basically just turns off the sign when the sun goes down, you know, that you can get into streetlights, kind of triggering that and running into problems that way. So I think a time clock would be very beneficial, and I don't know if there's a city ordinance for, you know, signage being turned off at 10:30 or something like that, but, you know, very doable with a time clock.
And then, could you speak a little bit about the amount of illumination or the lumens that are in the sign?
Sure, the measurement is actually nits. And I don't have the, I guess, specifications for the, this signage in particular, the amount of nits. But that's something I could provide, you know, as soon as possible. You know, we don't really have any issues with, you know, this is just kind of a sign that you might see at a retail center, or a church, or really, it's just kind of a standard illumination. Specifically for signage.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could we just be a little more specific then? Is this internally illuminated behind a diffused piece of plexiglass or something like that? So it's diffused, we're not seeing the LED diodes.
Correct.
By comparison, right down the block to the entrance to the community center, that new bright LED monument sign at the driveway, those are direct LEDs, and those get a little glary. And so this will be, those LEDs will be behind a translucent panel, so that they'll be more diffuse.
Exactly right, there is a polycarbonate face. So the whole character or graphic will illuminate uniformly throughout the panel and face. And as you mentioned, you will not see individual LED modules.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes, Commissioner Mehdi.
Just for reference, is the other signage that's actually on the building of the high school the same style, and that's an internally illuminated white signs?
Actually, the illuminated signage on the building now is kind of in a cabinet form. But same LEDs, same type of illumination, these are individual characters. So we call these like a channel letter set, as opposed to or versus the cabinet-style signage that is currently on the building.
Great, thank you, Mr. Tauschek.
Thank you.
Hope that helped answer your questions. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? Okay, I see no more public requests to speak, so I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
All right, Commissioner Goodings made a motion to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Toomey with the second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing is closed, further discussion? Commissioner Mehdi?
I always go first, but I always have something to say. I kind of hate to be negative on this. I'm totally supportive of the high school and like providing really great signage. I think this is great signage, but I do think that this is too large. It's, we're increasing the overall signage square footage from, what, 268 to 371? That's 75%, I can't do that math in my head. But it's pretty significant for one sign when the, when the other 268 consists of eight or so, or eight or nine different signs. So I don't know what the second biggest sign is, but it seems like this is easily the largest sign, and it's not exactly the main entrance, although it's the Performing Arts Main Entrance. Where I'm getting with, on this is, since this isn't the, you know, main Eden Prairie High School entrance sign, it's really the Performing Arts Center sign. I thought that the addition of, even having the Eden Prairie High School text in it was a little unnecessary, since we have the logo, and then we had the Performing Arts Center. And I was just thinking of ways to reduce the overall square footage, because it does, again, seem like we're jumping from 268 to 370 is a very large percentage just for one sign, when the rest of the signage is eight or other signs. So that was sort of my thought, is, is not that I don't like the sign, I think it's bigger than it needs to be. And if a solution to that is just remove the redundancy of the words Eden Prairie High School, or shorten it to something like EPHS, would be my suggestion. I also thought it was a little strange to have the, if you look at the dimensions of the text of Eden Prairie High School, those letters are actually taller than the Performing Arts Center letters. Again, what are we trying to advertise here? You know, is this also serving as a main Eden, you know, Eden Prairie High School entrance sign? If so, then I understand why we'd want to keep Eden Prairie High School text in there. If not, I think that it's a little bit unnecessarily large of a jump in terms of size, square footage, and that we could have the same size, or same, accomplish the same sign in its goals with just removing some of the text. And then that way, number one, you're going to see and read the Performing Arts Center probably more, because it's not this page of text, which just kind of becomes when you have to read the whole sign as you're driving by. So that's sort of my thoughts, is it seems a little excessive on the size, and that it includes, and that it could easily, you know, be smaller than what it is, when comparing it to the rest of the square footage.
Thank you, Commissioner Mehdi, Commissioner Kirk?
I'll kind of represent the other side of the argument. Eden Prairie has a reputation of being hard to find your way around in. I was at one point in time years ago on a wayfaring commission, trying to help, help sign, help, help, help people find their way around Eden Prairie. And I had a wife who worked at the high school for 13 years, and two kids who went to the high school, and still, every time I go into the high school, I'm confused. So for me, given the size of the facility, the size of the campus, the magnitude of the campus, anything we can do to decrease confusion of people trying to find their way into the school and into the Performing Arts Center, I think is a positive step. Now, I think the speaker brought up a very good point. It can't do that and cause the neighborhood a change in character. I personally don't think that's the case, but, you know, we should, we should ensure that. So I'm supportive of the sign, simply because I'd like to see Eden Prairie not be oversigned, for sure, but at least be a little easier to find our way around it. And I think this sign would help.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk, Commissioner Gooding?
I would second the part about finding your way around town, you know, not being a native here and moving here in 1995, the high school is a difficult place to find a way around. The one thing that interests me with this, though, is the hours of operation. You know, this is a sign for the Performing Arts Center. It doesn't operate every night of the week. You know, it has events occasionally, and that's when people need to find it. So I'm surprised that, you know, there may be a photo eye, or maybe a timer. You know, when something is going on, then it would be good to have it on. When, when that place is not operating at night, why subject the neighborhood to the light of the sign? You know, it's, it's not to identify the high school, at least it doesn't appear to be. That's my comment.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Farr.
I'll throw my hand in the ring. I appreciate Commissioner Mehdi's viewpoint on this. I drive past this twice a day. And my wife also volunteers at the high school, and has for many years, especially for Performing Arts Center activities, and wayfinding is a problem there, especially differentiating between the Performing Arts Center activities and then the original auditorium that's just further east to that second entrance, is it entrance number three at the high school. So sometimes people come, especially visitors from out of town, and want to know where their event is being held, and they may think it's the Performing Arts Center, they walk in, and then they find out it's in the small original auditorium further on down to entrance number three. So I know signage is important for differentiating those two public spaces very well. I agree with the previous comments about it, this is kind of event-driven signage. I think it might be hard to remember to turn on the sign for a certain event, so I can appreciate the ease of minimizing that by just having a time clock on and time clock off, or photo cell on and time clock off. I think that's fine, I don't think it'll be too much of a disturbance to the neighborhood. I think the letter height is appropriate for the distance from the road. But in terms of the messaging, I agree with Commissioner Mehdi that the messaging doesn't have to include the Eden Prairie High School, because they've already arrived at the high school. I think that V-shaped monument sign that exists at the corner of Valley View and the high school entrance is adequate. Even though it's a little bit low, everybody who is a visitor to the high school comes from the east. They're driving west on Valley View, you can't miss the monument sign, and you've already driven past the high school anyway, so you know that you're, you've arrived. So I don't think that the Eden Prairie High School text is mandatory on this sign, because you've arrived and you know it. Getting to the Performing Arts Center, I think, is important, and if they're seeing brake lights, I think, I think the messaging for the Performing Arts Center text is important. I thought that they might want to also ask for messaging to get to the other auditorium at the same time, so that people would have that fork in the road opportunity going through their brains before they applied the brakes in the car. So I don't necessarily have a problem with their square footage request, but I can appreciate Commissioner Mehdi's point about the additional messaging that I think is redundant and unnecessary.
Comments from the commissioners? Well, I guess, Commissioner Farr, Commissioner Mehdi, do you, are you proposing that? Or would you like to hear from Mr. Tauschek about that?
I don't know. I don't think it's our place to, to design the sign for them, so it's hard to say, you know. But, you know, again, I, I, I don't know. Again, I kind of agree with what Commissioner Farr said. It's the size and the lettering, the Performing Arts Center component is absolutely fine. That logo's great, but are we just adding too much text and really kind of missing the point, causing people to have to read more by having that Eden Prairie High School part in there, which then feeds into the square footage? So our, you know, I don't know what I think. If I think that, you know, if I say that I think we should deny it as my reason because of the square footage, with, or is it simply because I oppose spelling out Eden Prairie High School? Again, I'm a little bit unsure what I think here. I don't, I don't know if, if, you know, one, one thought, I'm just thinking out loud, is maybe we're okay, and we're just offering this as a suggestion. If we approve the 101 or 100 square feet, then they can always make it smaller, if they want to take our advice. That's one thought I'm having right now, but, Mr. Farr, I don't know if you have thoughts as to the voting component of this?
Mr. Chair? Yep, no, I agree with that strategy. I, while I heard a question from, you know, the neighbors, I don't think it was a compelling reason to push back on size or illumination of the sign. So in terms of, you know, findings, I think that it's a reasonable request. It's a large campus, a lot of square footage, a lot of buildings going on, wayfinding is important. If they've determined that that messaging is appropriate for their needs, far be it from me to stand in their way. My opinion is that it might be a little bit too wordy, but, but let them, let them deal with that themselves and, and see if that's the case. But from a zoning standpoint, I think they've checked the boxes for me.
Commissioner Higgins?
I just want to just concur with Commissioner Farr and some of the comments along those lines, leaving it up to the school board to decide finally what they want for the lettering and so forth. But honestly, as a grandparent who chauffeured three students through the high school and are now all through, it was always a challenge for me if I hadn't been there in a while. Where is exactly the place where I need to get a good parking place to get to the Performing Arts Center? And so this is a big step that I'm really happy to see the school district go ahead with.
If you wouldn't mind, here's maybe one question for Julie. If we, if we allow the variance for 103 square feet sign, but let's say they do eliminate some of the words, and so it's smaller, would they, and, but then they find that maybe they could add a different wayfinding sign somewhere else that might help address some of these other problems? Would that then allow them to potentially, you know, they say 50 square feet, could they use that somewhere else without having to go through Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the way the request is submitted before you this evening is to amend the PUD to change from six signs to seven. So it's about the number of signs, number of signs and square footage.
Okay.
So with that being crafted the way it is, it wouldn't allow that type of flexibility that, that you're talking about?
Unless they maybe made an existing sign bigger that wasn't big enough, or something to that effect.
Correct.
Thanks.
All right, I think looking at this, I understand the overall concern, but it is a really large facility, and these signs are spread all around the building. So I guess it's less of a concern for me, and looking at the view from this, you're only seeing that one particular piece of the sign, so I think I'm okay with the sign as it is. Any other thoughts from anyone else, or discussion, or do you want to include a recommendation there? I guess.
I'll, I'll make the motion, again, with my subtitle comment, along what Commissioner Farr said, is, you know, we sort of, we have some thoughts on it, but it's up to the school board to, or whoever the decision-makers are, to decide what, if they modify the design or not. But overall, okay with the size. So I'm going to move to recommend- So I'm going to move to recommend approval for a planned unit development concept review on 66.6 acres, planned unit development amendment with waivers on 66.6 acres based on plans, stamp dated June 5, 2020, and the staff report dated June 22, 2020.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Mehdi with comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Okay, great. Project's approved, move forward. Thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight. All right. Moving on this evening, do we have a planner's report, Julie?
No, sir.
All right. Any members' reports?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Commissioner Farr?
I would just like to take this opportunity, since we're talking about signs and specifically nonconforming signs, and in the crisis that we're in there for businesses trying to reopen and things like that, distinguishing our body as an advisory committee versus an enforcement committee, I've noticed around town, and you probably have also, the extended number of banner signs that are nonconforming around town, whether you picked up on that or not when you drive by, but especially, I call them the banana signs with the single pole that come up about eight feet, and they flutter in the wind, they put them out by the curb to increase business visibility. They're all over town, and I don't want to be that guy to, to be the police. It's not my job on that issue, and I think if anything, we're trying to support our local businesses trying to get back on their feet in these times of very difficult retail sales. So this is the last time I want to squash anybody to the ground on that. But I think that I'd like to hear if there's any specific leniency being granted on that issue by the city council that maybe we ought to know about, or if not, is there a way in the future that maybe we could inform the owners of businesses in Eden Prairie about their compliance and lack, lack of compliance with these types of signs, and/or going directly to signage manufacturers and vendors in the area to let them know that those types of signs, if they sell them, are not allowed in our city. So I don't know what mechanisms are available to curb the use of nonconforming signs, but whatever's being done now apparently isn't being done well enough for people to listen. So that's my observation. I don't know if anybody shares that or not, but I just wanted to bring that to the fore.
Okay. Is that something, Julie, we could talk about at a future meeting? Or is that not in our purview?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, certainly that's something that the Planning Commission can discuss, you know, should they choose. It is a topic of conversation that historically has come up, you know, in my time at the city, it's come up a couple of times at council, whether that's, you know, formally or as maybe a part of one of their workshop sessions, you know, that a council member has noticed a few more of those temporary-type signs than maybe they prefer to see. As a part of the, you know, pandemic and COVID issues that we're going through, the city manager did issue a city manager's order. I'm not sure if the commission was aware of that, but it was put out on the city's website. So there was a city manager's order issued that basically says as a part of the current conditions and outdoor seating that is allowed for restaurants and things, things like signage and parking requirements and outdoor setbacks are for the time being, being, I want to choose my words carefully here, but not being adhered to as closely as they would be in other situations, and that that is, it's written right into the order that that is for during the time of the pandemic only, that, you know, once the city manager's order expires, things are going to be expected to be compliant with code in an effort to, as Commissioner Farr talked about, support our businesses and see them continue to, to flourish in our community. So there is some flexibility that has been initiated already as a part of that city manager's order, and, you know, we do operate on an enforcement basis, so we do, once we get a complaint on a property, then we go out and we will inspect it and follow up as, as necessary, but we are not a proactive organization that, you know, we're sending somebody out in a car to, you know, check off which property may or may not comply with signage or parking or other issues such as that. So, you know, as a part of zoning ordinance updates, I know on your work plan, you see that we have those code amendments every year that we talk about that we want to do. Signage is certainly a part of that at this time. It's a part of our work plan, but there are other items that we're working on kind of ahead of that, given the, the current conditions. So it's certainly something that is within the purview of the Planning Commission, should you want to talk about it a little further. Our sign regulations are currently on the website, so when we do get calls from sign vendors, you know, we do direct them not only to the sign ordinance, but also kind of give them the, the highlights, if you will, that temporary banners aren't allowed, and here's what you're allowed for for lease, that type of information. So anything we can do to answer any more questions that you have, or, you know, dig into it a little deeper, we're certainly happy to have that conversation.
Commissioner Farr did that.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess, you know, after hearing all that, I guess my dream would be if there would be some type of a, a soft communication with our businesses in Eden Prairie and especially sign vendors to at least increase awareness as opposed to coming down with the heavy hand of the law on something as minor, as a signage infraction. We want to be pro-business, but, but awareness out there, I think a lack of awareness breeds further nonconformance. That's my issue.
Well, it sounds like it was temporary during the pandemic, so I think it's fair to get through the pandemic and then we could talk about some soft messaging.
That's not the case.
No?
No, no. This was, this was an issue prior to the pandemic.
Oh, you're talking about prior.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? I actually think there's, I, I support Commissioner Farr's comment about, you know, if we have ordinances on the books, we should have them, they should be enforced in a reasonable way. But I also very much support and did see on the, on emails or the website, the city manager's direction softening some of those rules, given the circumstances we're in, which again, I, I strongly support, not only to support the business, but also to, to send the message that we understand that you're taking liberties right now, and that's okay, given the circumstances, but remember, there are ordinances out there that we still need to worry about. And, and I thought that was a positive step, not just taking a blind eye and letting it occur, but acknowledging that it was okay to some point during this emergency and implying, I don't think he actually said it, but implying that when the emergency's over, we got to clean, we got to quote-unquote, "clean up our act" again.
Great. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other members' reports? All right. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
I'll make-
So moved. All right. Commissioner Kirk? All right. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. And Commissioner Toomey with the second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Adjourn. Thank you, everyone.[1784.83][1784.83]